Hi, John.
Hello.
How are you?
Okay.
Sure.
We have that request from the town board regarding any recommendations as to expanding the number of Airbnbs.
Nothing.
They're just gonna do it.
I I have heard nothing, but a random person came in and handed me that article. I know nothing.
You're I'm sorry. Say that again.
He said, I heard nothing from anyone here. I just a random person came in and handed me that article that I shared with you guys. Not a word from the town.
So they're not even asking for the planning board's input.
I know nothing.
What's the question?
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Hi Connor, you're a little muffled.
I'm sorry about that. I'll see if I can fix that.
Um Judy, I sent an article that someone dropped off to my office today.
Oh, yeah, I saw that.
But we heard nothing from the town. This was just kinda I got an FYI, so I sent it to you guys, just so you knew.
Well.
I don't know validity. I don't know anything.
Since it's public, I think the planning board should have some sort of input.
Totally agree, John.
I'll come on my camera after I finish my dinner.
Enjoy your dinner, Judy.
Hello, Peter.
Hi, Peter.
Hello.
Hi Judy, what's for dinner?
Um mushroom ravioli with peas and nuts.
Sounds yummy. Hi, Peter, how are you?
Hi, Melissa.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Irina. Hi, Jesse.
Nice picture, Judy.
I'm thinner these days.
That's one of your covers, isn't it, for one of your books?
Well, it was a picture that I had taken for the back cover, yeah. I'm down at least twenty-five pounds from that, which means I have more wrinkles showing. Hmm, we don't have a quorum yet.
I think we do. We have four.
Yeah.
And James is coming on right now.
Connor, John, Judy.
Right.
James.
There we go.
Now we do.
I'm pretty sure Stuart will be here, and he didn't tell me otherwise.
And we got James, okay. Okay, everybody, it is six thirty, so I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Woodstock Planning Board for September first, two thousand twenty-two, held via Zoom. So the first thing is are there any updates to the agenda, Melissa?
Nope.
Okay, the next thing are minutes from August eighteenth, and I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes unless anybody has objections with them.
No move.
Are you all in favor? All right.
All right.
Hi.
Okay, under communications and announcements, we have an email from G. Malkin regarding the column or lane. We have emails from Ken Panza and Laura Ricky regarding the aquifer protection law. We have an email from supervisor McKenna regarding the appointment of a liaison. We have emails from supervisor McKenna regarding spam emails that may have been received. We also have an email from supervisor McKenna regarding zoning amendments. And then we have the talk of towns topics for the August issue, July, August issue. So. Peter? Yeah? Did the supervisor mention anything regarding this possible expansion of the STRs? Uh, I read that in the paper that somebody sent me, actually.
Yeah.
It was in the paper. That they the original, I can't remember the original figure was over three hundred or something, and he was talking about going back to that original figure, and it was an association of STRs that he asked how many they had that need to get signed up, and I think they said about twenty-five more folks that wanted to get signed up. Well, if the article was correct, we still have some available slots for owner occupied. So the only thing to want to expand is non-owner occupied, and I would like to put that on the agenda tonight as a recommendation to the town board, in my case, not to do it.
I certainly agree. They agree.
Yeah, Connor said too. I agree, John.
I do too.
If it's owner occupied, that's one thing, but I agree enough with the non-owner occupies. All right, thanks, John. Very good point.
We'll do it. We'll talk about it and come up with an idea.
Okay. Thank you. So under scheduled business, we have four, three, three sketch plan reviews. So the first one is Jack Barron and Linda Leeds and Joseph T. Fawn and Marie and Marianne Roots, and that's planning board case twenty-two dash one, two, three, four. And this is a sketch plan review of a subdivision application for a lot line revision to revise lot lines of three parcels to create two new lots totaling three point three and one point three acres located in the R five zoning district at three ninety-two and four twenty O'Hale Mountain Road in Woodstock. And the representative is Bill State from Vittorius and Conrad. So Bill, if you're here.
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, would you please tell the board what you propose to do?
Sure. So the two neighbors have an adjoining piece between them that they are looking to absorb to move their lot line so that they can each take a piece of this property and combine it with their own. The barons are going to get one point roughly six and Baron and Leeds, and then Mr. Phelan and Mrs. Ruth are going to get about zero point eight acres added to their property. So.
I have a question.
Sure.
Um, according to the parcel map, there is another person involved. Did she sell the property?
The property has been sold to the Baron, Jack Baron and Linda Leeds.
Okay, so she's still on the parcel map as of the last time I downloaded it was fairly recently. When was the sale?
Um, can you answer that, Jack or Linda? The sale?
You're muted, Linda.
I might be able to.
It's been a long time, actually. Let's see, I because I got something from the town that I was waiting to fill it in from the assessor's office. I have no idea when the date is. I should have looked it up, sorry.
Well, not not to worry. It's just when I see three owners on the map and there's two involved with this, I have to ask the question.
There are actually four of us involved, and on October twelfth, two thousand twenty-one, we got uh, so it was before then.
It was in August of it was in August of two thousand twenty-one. I don't remember the exact date, but this is Mariana and one of the people who purchased the property, and it was in August of last year.
Okay, well, I have twenty twenty-one map, so maybe they put it up before that, or maybe it didn't catch up. Not a problem. Thank you.
All right, there's a well, Bill can go on if you have more to add to the proposal, Bill.
Yeah, so what we're basically doing is taking three lots and we're going to break them down into two, and we're going to take the remaining two lots are going to just be enlarged. That's that's the basis of it.
Okay, so there's no there's not a plan to build another house. This is just.
No, there's no no separate building lots. This is just to absorb, you know, and make more room for the two other properties.
Okay, I don't know if we need to put the plot up, but I looked at it, and of course, the main concern for us is to make sure the septic wells are on each person's property, so the lot doesn't divide those, and it clearly doesn't. So, you know, this looks fairly straightforward. It is a subdivision by our code, so if Bill, is it possible, can you state the new lot line, the three points, the beginning and the center and the end, so so a representative from the planning board can see that line?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right.
Just give me a heads up when you're heading out there.
And not much to see, I'm sure, but just it's a procedure we have to go through.
Sure.
Basically, it's a subdivision.
I have my map up. Of course, the line, the parcel map line goes right through one of the houses, but you're obviously going to solve that problem.
You are seeing the the actual survey, so.
Yeah, they the the overview is not correct.
No, never is.
Never is.
All right, does any other members of the planning board have questions for Bill regarding this?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, go ahead, James.
Uh, are there any others? Are there any existing structures or any any types of wells or anything on the property you're dividing and having?
There's two dilapidated buildings that were being taken down.
Some will be removed.
Yes, they're going to be removed.
Okay.
Anybody else on the board have questions for Bill? Okay, so Bill, what we're gonna do is assign a site rep, is to come out and take a look as soon as you have that staked out, and then Melissa can get you set up for a public hearing.
Okay, very good. Um, when do you think a representative would be out?
Uh, well, at the end of this meeting, we'll we'll assign them and and probably within a week, I would think it's pretty easy to get to.
So you can you can tell me when it's when you have it done, and then I'll let them know and they can go. You just let me know.
All right, very good.
Sound good?
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Bill.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, uh, next, we have Jesse Cullen, DuPont and Lindsay Delpas and special use permit number twenty-two dash zero six six eight. This is a sketch plan review of a special use permit application to operate a health services office in the R three zoning district located at twenty-eight Country Club Lane in Woodstock. So I don't know who the rep is. Is Jesse here?
Oh, yeah, this is Jesse.
Okay, could you please tell the planning board what you propose to do?
Sure. My name is Jesse Cullen DuPont. So I live at twenty-eight Country Club Lane at the R three district with my wife Lindsay Delpas and our two children. So we've been here since two thousand seventeen. Um, I am also a physical therapist. I've been practicing for about twelve years, and I would love to, you know, open and operate a physical therapy office in the existing extension of our home. So that space that I'm proposing that I kind of put in the proposal, it's a it's a little bit over five hundred square feet. It's all existing within the total square footage of my home, which is about thirty-seven hundred square feet. It has kind of a separate side entrance, and basically what I'm proposing is using the space for a little bit of a treatment room. There's a bathroom there, a little hallway and a little tiny waiting room, but I would love to see patients there as a business. It would just be me. It wouldn't be any staff or employees. So I would be seeing basically one client an hour with fifteen minutes between and at most seeing only about four to five people a day. But that's what I would love to do is to open up a business in my home.
Okay.
I have this mapped.
Yeah.
We've got the photograph. Just a second.
Sure.
So that's the house, and looks like that's the driveway.
Um, yes, yes.
I mean, the property line, the property lines are often inexact, so don't worry about that. This looks like it might be a vehicle.
That at a time, I think that's our shed.
Okay.
I'm just trying to get a good handle on this. Yeah, that should be our our shed, or that actually might be a camper. That's no longer there.
It looks more like a camper.
Yeah, so that's a camper, yes.
Okay, so these are twenty twenty-one flyovers. So this is this this here or one of those is the building you're thinking of?
Yeah, so the the west side that you're pointing to back in the back, yeah, that part, there's a separate side entrance to that location, and yes, that's what's proposed is the space.
Okay, so the distance from the parking is very short, it looks like.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other members of the board have questions for the applicant? Um, I'm assuming obviously there's the issue is you're talking about getting a business license in a residential area uh, which is permitted with a special use permit, and since the CEO sent it to us, it should be well within the code. So the only thing the planning board would normally look at is increase in traffic, increase in lights, hours of operation as far as lights in the neighborhood. I mean, those are the main issues. I I know one of the things is the square footage that you're going to use as as your business. It's it's a it's a required, there's a there's a minimum and a maximum, and I assume you you fit into that for your square footage in the for the business. So uh, any other members of the board have a question? I mean, it's a it's a health services, and we're talking chiropractic work, right?
A physical therapy.
Physical therapy, actually physical therapy, okay. Jesse?
Yes.
You are licensed.
Yes, I'm licensed in New York State. I'll be setting up a a single member PLLC. Um, so yes, but yes, I am licensed in New York State.
Thank you.
Yeah, welcome.
Yes, James?
Um, I'm actually I'm actually a neighbor of yours. I I know your house. I think you do have sort of ample, it's like a double lane type of driveway, right, where you can actually park?
Yeah, it's the length of the driveway to the shed, I believe, is like a hundred and ten feet, and the end of it is twenty-one feet, so it's it would accommodate two available spaces. I only expect to have one person there at a time, and again, like four to five people total throughout, you know, reasonable business hours, nine to four type thing, so.
But two people could overlap, and it wouldn't be that big of a you wouldn't be parking on the street at all or anything.
Correct, correct. They would be there, and it'd be it'd be it'd accommodate two cars if needed.
Okay.
Uh, let me ask a question, Peter.
Sure.
Sure.
The code says under business uses, medical clinic and related health services office, five spaces per professional plus one per employee. Does that seem reasonable? That is what it says in the code.
Five spaces for?
Per employee.
But they don't have.
Per professional, so he would be the professional.
Why would they need five spaces for one person?
That's why I'm asking the question. It doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Unless that's it doesn't say anything about the 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 patients. It just says per professional. Maybe they're thinking about it in terms of the of the the uses, but that doesn't make sense. Now, wait a minute, this is that's business uses, and that is parking and loading required number of off-street parking spaces. But you've got to double with driveway, and people were behind each other. You've probably got more than enough.
He's got a good sized driveway, yeah.
Yeah, Judy, I know we went through this with the with the chiropractic the application we had down on.
I remember, yeah.
They had they had employees. They had several employees. That's I remember that.
You mean a professional building? This is like actually an office out of a home?
This, yeah, it's it's a um, it's a space that was originally like an extension built on the original home. Um, but it's it's just a very large, open space with windows. I'll basically have a treatment table, and that's basically the space.
Right. I think Judy's reading something where it might mean an actual building that's a professional building.
Oh, I think it I think it is, yeah.
Five spaces, that would make sense. That doesn't make sense if it's just a single room in it.
No, I agree, because I think this is more like mixed use.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Like, he he needs a special use permit to operate out of his house for his business for medical. That was basically how it was written, so I don't think that applies what you was.
Anytime a new building or structure is erected is the heading. Okay, I just wanted to double check what the what the code said.
So Jesse, I think the main point is that that all your clients will be parked on your property and not on the street. That's
Correct, absolutely.
My main concern.
Okay, yeah, absolutely.
Any other board members have questions for Jess? If not, uh, I guess Melissa will get you set up with a a public hearing.
Um, right.
So as soon as that she can do that and you can get scheduled, we'll uh, we'll do that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Jesse, I'll I'll email you next week and we'll we'll set a time, okay?
Okay, great. Thank you, Melissa.
You're welcome.
Okay. Our next one is a network building and consulting, OVO Crown Castle and Selco Partnership, Verizon Wireless. It's an eligible facilities request, SPR twenty-two dash zero three two two H and special use permit number twenty-two dash zero three six one H. And this is a sketch plan review of a site plan review and special use permit applications for modifications to existing site plan to remove six coax cables, install three antennas, and new mount as per mount modification analysis with no change in structure height or ground space in the R eight zoning district located at one two two California Quarry Road in Woodstock, and the rep is Lamar Freeman, and and I'm going to ask Stuart to handle this case, as he's been so kind to do the other cell cases. So Stuart, it's yours.
Thank you, Peter. Good evening, Mr. Freeman.
Good evening.
I'm the vice chair of the planning board. As you should know, Peter's asked me to carry forward this this meeting, this application. So uh, I I'd like you to tell us what the application is all about, why it's being made, and why it's needed.
Well, basically Verizon's doing an upgrade, you know, I I'm sure that you all know or seen commercials or for five G. They're upgrading their their service for five G in this particular location and all their locations throughout, you know, nationwide. Um, so this is just a general upgrade. They're just, you know, upgrading their antennas to put in five G antennas. Um, as as per mention, there's no additional height requirements nor space requirements for this particular installation. It's literally just a a an upgrade for for service purposes.
And are you able to tell me how many antennas are currently on your array and number will be after this change if it's approved?
Uh, currently, there are I believe it looks like there are nine, and there will be remaining nine at the end of the installation or the modification.
So one thing I'm not clear about, the the application says you're adding three new antennas, but are those replacing existing?
Yes, they're replacing existing, so they'll replace one antenna per sector.
I see. So you're gonna take out three existing and replace them with three new, and you said that those are to facilitate uh, the five G service.
That is correct, sir.
Okay. And I noticed in your plans, the, the pictures that you have of, um, existing and the new, they pretty have like green coverings on them. Are those stealth coverings or stealth socks to camouflage?
That's, uh, the covering or the, uh, the stuffing that to match what's, what's already existing, uh, currently. Uh, it's a, a monopine is what they call it in industry. Um, so that would be, you know, obviously moving forward, they would have the same exact, um, coverings to, to, uh, obviously conceal the, the antennas.
And are the, are the, are the existing antennas already covered with those stealth coverings or?
Yes, yes, yes.
They are.
Yes, oh, uh, the, the whole monopole is, is, uh, is covered with this mono, it's called a monopole or excuse me, monopine, because it looks like a tree, uh, with this monopine covering. So it will remain the same and will match exactly what is existing currently.
Right, and forgive me for, um, I just want to make sure I understand this.
Sure.
Around the arrays, there's these like, uh, fake camouflage leaves that are made to look like.
Yes, that's what I was, that's what I was referring to.
Right, but in addition, you're gonna have on the antennas, you're gonna cover the antennas with this sock material that matches the color.
Whatever color, whatever color is currently there, they will match, um, whatever's, uh, currently there too.
The, so the antennas will be enclosed in, in, in each antenna will be enclosed in a, a sock, for lack of a better word.
If that's what currently is there, then yes.
Okay, well, I don't know what's currently there other than what you tell me what's on the plans, but in, in the photos that you, you, that are part of your submission. They seem to show that the antennas are covered by these stealth socks in addition to the leaves, in addition to the faux leaves. Is that you're understanding as well?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Again, I'm not. The photo, Stuart, is that the photo that is, uh, of Mr. Freeman? I'm John Lyons and the council to the board. Good. Um, is that the photo, Stuart, where the, the panels all appear green?
Yeah, that's what I'm referring to.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, absolutely, a hundred percent. Again, I'm not from the area. I'm just going off of the, uh, information and the, the documentation that I do have.
Yeah, okay, okay. And do we know when the, uh, application was, uh, filed with the town?
Uh, the special use permit was sent out on August second.
And Melissa, do we know when it was received and where?
I received it August eighth.
Eighth?
Eighth.
And do we know when the, was it sent to the building department initially and then sent over to us?
Yes.
So Melissa, do, does the referral show when, when it was received at the building department?
Yeah. They didn't, they received it the fifth.
Yeah. Okay, and we got it three days later.
Yep.
Okay.
I think it was a weekend, but.
Because we know from other cases there, there's a sixty-day, uh, shot clock on these.
Yes, correct.
Applications, that's why I asked those questions. So the next, well, before we go to the next step, is any, do any of the planning boards have questions of the applicant on this application? Hearing on, um.
No, sir.
I'm sorry, was that Connor?
He said, no, sir.
Okay, very polite. Oh, um, I, I would say that the next step would be to put this matter on for a, a public hearing, which is part of our process. And it's an important part so that the public, uh, can come in and, uh, ask any questions that they want to have, uh, presented to the applicant and the applicant will be present to respond and so on. So that we get input from the public before we, uh, decide, uh, to take action. So do you, do you understand what I just said, Mr. Freeman? So.
Yes, absolutely.
Attend, uh, the meeting when the public hearing is scheduled and, um.
I, I can do October sixth.
October sixth.
Okay.
And it's gonna be at the same time, six, six thirty?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. And is it, um, just in case there's any, you know, radio frequency questions, um, it's okay to have other, uh, colleagues on as well?
Absolutely, we welcome them.
We would encourage that because a lot of times on these applications, uh, the board and sometimes members of the public have points or questions they want to raise concerning how much, um, energy is being emitted and so on.
And that's obviously way above my pay grade, so I just wanted to make sure that, you know, I can have the necessary folks on to, uh, to speak in that regard.
We would encourage that, and if you know beforehand who the person or persons are and, um, have their, uh, positions and maybe some qualifications, so we know that coming in, in ahead of time, that would be helpful.
Of course. I'm sure Melissa will send me the information, necessary information, so I can distribute that out to my team. And we can have the necessary parties on to, um, answer any questions that may be needed to answer.
Yeah, if I, Stuart, if I may add one other suggestion for Mr. Freeman, it just, um, if you can talk to someone or have someone on your team who is actually familiar with the existing conditions on the tower. There's have to be questions about that, that would be helpful as well.
Absolutely, I will, um, have a construction manager.
Lamar, typically we look for the frequency information, you know, possibly an engineer, someone who knows kind of what they're reading. Um, we're in a town that's pretty adamant against five G.
I'm sorry?
We are in a town that's pretty adamantly against five G.
Okay.
I get a lot of questions on that.
Understood.
Well, Melissa, I just want to clarify that. The town government hasn't taken a position, but there are a sizable number of people in the town who raise, uh, concerns about five G, and so she's just alerting you to that.
No, I understand.
Um, okay.
Thank you, Stuart. I just wanted to mention what needed.
So I have a couple other, uh, concerns. One is, um, with the sixty-day shot clock, Melissa, do we have any earlier meetings at, at which we could put this on? Because the, uh, October sixth is running up against that, that sixty-day timeframe.
September twenty-ninth would be the first possible, but it's a workshop meeting.
We have, we have subject matter scheduled for that meeting already?
We do, but you could talk to Peter and see if he's okay with, that's up to you guys.
Well, before, well, Mr. Freeman, you know, you, you, I'm sure you can understand my concern. We want to have the public weigh in before the shot clock.
Oh, absolutely.
Then we can take action, um, after having completed that necessary step. Would the applicant be willing to, um, suspend the shot clock for a few days after October sixth to enable us to, uh, conduct the public, the public hearing without?
That, that I can't, um, give you much leeway on because that's not my, uh, not my doing, just because of the fact that obviously I have to answer to Crown Castle and, and Verizon. Um, so I, I would say that that would be very, very, uh, iffy on, on that subject. Just because they're, they're, they're very, you know, extremely time sensitive and, and in regards to this, this shot clock.
Peter, where, where are we on the, the workshop and what's the subject and is there, would there be any concern about, um, moving the workshop to a different date?
Or we could have this and then have the workshop. I mean, I, I mean, I understand that this is time sensitive, but I just, I want Peter to say it's okay. I know, you know, there's a few things we do really kind of need to discuss at that workshop. Peter, what do you think? Can we do this public hearing first?
Well, I get to Stuart's point, um, we want to get the public's input before the clock runs out. I don't think we can do both the workshop, subject matter and this because of the amount of people probably interested in this. So, uh,
I agree.
I guess what we could do is to have this on the workshop, and if we get done with the time left, we could deal with some of the.
Would the board be willing to have a special meeting on this late September?
That's, uh, I, I, Melissa, I, you mean it's?
I think, you know what? I think, I think the twenty-ninth is doable. Schedule wise, I have time to get out this stuff. Um, and we'll, I mean, we have a few things, and if we don't have time, then we can work on me scheduling it into another meeting. I mean, I, I know this shot clock and the time is of the essence.
Well, uh, the last, uh, cell tower case we had at the public hearing, there's very few attendees.
Went quick.
And it went pretty quick. I don't know that.
And the time before that, we had what, sixty people here, eighty people here?
Yeah.
So we never know. Yeah.
Yeah. The other, I, I, option might be to start, do the public hearing at the twenty-ninth, say, starting at, at six.
Oh, I would, oh, earlier, okay.
You know, so it wouldn't carve into too much of the, of the other agenda, the workshop.
Is the planning board okay with that and earlier start meeting, six?
All right with me.
Peter?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. Any objections? John, is there right with you?
Yes.
Okay.
So Mr. Freeman, our public hearing is for September twenty-ninth at six P M.
What do you know?
Changing my calendar right now.
P M.
Good.
Okay.
Melissa, you'll, you'll both face the reminder to us on that, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we're gonna need a quorum and so on.
And Melissa, again, if you could just send me, um, any, um, documentation stating, uh, moving forward. And so I can dis, disperse that to, to my team and have, have everyone, uh, you know, attend. That needs to be on the call.
Okay, the, the other, the other point I want to raise with the, my fellow board members, um, a- as you know, in previous cases, we, we've raised, uh, an issue as to Crown Castle's, uh, standing to authorize our consideration of the application, um, since they're not the, uh, owner of the property or the tower. The town board is the owner and, um, I was going to suggest that, uh, we authorize, we direct, uh, Melissa to send a copy of the application to the town board with an email, asking them to advise us before the September twenty-ninth, uh, next meeting on this case, uh, if they have any objection to our considering it. Thinking that if, if we receive no objection, then we can conclude that the town board, uh, is, uh, is, is approving Crown Castle's, uh, request that we consider it. Because there's still a question in my mind as to whether they have the authority to do that, but I think I would be satisfied if, if we follow that process. John Lyons, do you have any, uh, concern about that idea?
I, I don't have concern about the idea. I think it would be prudent. That's the, uh, process that we followed with the other applications. And so it makes sense in this case as well.
Okay, so.
I will, I will send that email tomorrow and see, see you and Peter.
All right, thank you so much. I don't have any further. I'm sorry, I'm, my daughter made me a delicious meal and I'm chowing down as we do this, so forgive me. Uh, I don't have any further, um, statements to make on this or questions, but if anyone else on the board has any points or questions for the applicant, now would be the time to raise them.
I'm fine.
John, did you jot down September twenty-ninth at six o'clock?
Don Lyons, yes, I did.
And as of now, that will be by Zoom?
I don't know yet. We're scheduled through September thirteenth, I think.
Yes, if, that would actually be a very, um, important part to, uh, to let me know sooner than later.
I'm not sure, but Lamar, um, we can zoom you in if, if we're doing hybrid meetings, which, who knows? I don't know until the governor tells us, but.
Melissa will keep you posted.
I'll keep you posted.
Yeah. Where, where are you based, uh, Mr. Freeman?
I'm in New Jersey. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm a few hours away.
All right, all right.
Now, for in-person, may, maybe we can meet on your patio, Stuart. It looks awfully nice there.
Yeah.
And your daughter can make us all dinner.
Yeah, there you go.
Actually, my, my daughter's and my son-in-law and my grandson's patio, so you'd have to get three people's permission.
I don't know if you're familiar, Mr. Freeman, but the situation that the board's been facing is that the extensions of the ability to have these meetings on Zoom have been, uh, the state government has not been giving a lot of notice. They've ordinarily been sending out the notice that, uh, the extensions are being given on the same day that it's supposed to expire.
If not.
So, yeah, yeah, so we'll do the best I can. I will say that based on what, I, I don't have any magic knowledge, but based on what I know, I am expecting that the Zoom ability is going to be extended again, uh, when the expiration comes up, but.
Okay.
We'll see. But just so you know what our, our situation is, we're not trying to be rude.
No, no.
We just, we just don't get information at our end until the last second, almost literally.
Obviously, I know who, who can attend, um, you know, obviously in your area or, and who I have to actually, um, basically summons to, to attend this meeting. So that's, that's all that we're just really just concerned that we obviously want to accommodate you guys as well, so that's.
Great.
Thank you, John. I appreciate, I appreciate that. I'm, I'm so over, yeah, our short notice on and juggling this and legal notices and.
Yep, no, and, and every single town, we're all saying the same thing all the time, so I don't know.
I agree with John. We're going into winter again, guys.
It's crazy.
My one, uh, last question for Melissa, uh, is it possible to, uh, send me just a follow-up email of, of tonight's meeting? Just to, um, so I can send that to my team to, you know, engage and obviously let them know exactly what transpired this evening.
Absolutely. Tonight I will send you an email just with the public hearing date and time, just so you know, you could schedule and forward that on to whoever you need. Um, and if you would like the YouTube link of the actual meeting, I can get that to you next week.
John, that's no problem.
Okay, and just email me anything else that you need or give me a call.
Thank you so much.
All right, so that brings, uh, uh, today's session on this case to a close. Thank you for coming in and wish you a good night.
Have a good one. Thanks, everyone.
Turn the meeting back over to Peter Cross.
Okay, Stuart, thank you so much for handling that.
You're welcome.
In under unfinished business, we have zoning amendments received August twenty-sixth. We also have, Melissa told me the cell tower info from Supervisor McKenna.
That's what I'm talking about. That's, that's, he asked for a formal review. So you guys gotta tell me what you want to do. John's here.
I think it would make sense to look at that because it might affect the deliberations on this current cell tower question. Um, we, we do have a little more time on the, on the zoning revision. Although I hope we will get some time to talk about it this time, but it doesn't have to be long.
Okay, so that, uh.
So Peter, what's your thoughts on this? Should we, should we ask permission to give John it to look at and so he can kind of tell us what it means?
Yeah, I, I would think that's the way to go.
I'm, I'm, remember, I'm your process girl.
I would sure like to know what it means.
So John, Mr. Campanelli worked with the town board and they came up with some new, um, cellphone tower stuff that they want to put into zoning amendments, but I have to get in okay before I send it to you, but I wanted the board to tell me what to do.
Okay, is this mostly having to do with small cell?
I don't, honestly, I didn't look at it.
Okay, I looked at it and I don't understand it.
So, I looked at it too.
A lawyer.
I looked at it, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't get the gist of it, so, uh.
All right, another email I will send. John, I'll be in touch about that one.
Okay, I'll take a look at it and, yeah, Melissa, if you can tell me what the turnaround time is for me in your email, that would be great.
You got it.
So I, I have a, I have a question. How are we gonna get John Lyons paid for that work?
Well, that's why I'm asking permission to bill McKenna so it can come out of that general fund. Supervisor McKenna.
I think we should.
I needed you guys to acknowledge it so I can move forward with that.
I agree with that idea. I think we need to get funding out of the town, uh, government for this piece of work.
I agree.
Okay, I'm on it.
I don't know how anxious the town will be to have the second lawyer looking at it, but we'll see what happens.
Okay, we'll give it a try.
You're our lawyer, not Mr. Campanelli.
Yep, but I am a second lawyer.
Here we go again.
Okay, everybody, um, listen, unless you have anything else?
Yeah, John, John, John stepped away, but he had mentioned, uh, quite a few of you have seen that. Yeah, John, John, John stepped away, but he had mentioned, quite a few of you have seen that Freeman article. So I just want to know what you want me to write in my email regarding short-term rentals, but of course, John stepped away.
Well, you know, as John said, that I think we could pull the board, but I think we pretty much think there's enough non-occupy, non-owner occupied ones existing. If there's 25 more that didn't get a chance to sign on, it was still not over the original number that was floating, so it seems all right. In the, in the newspaper article, there was a line which been my point from day one, which is that these, the short-term rental permits are based on, because it's called a business, a residential property. And renting a house is not a business. And so I, from the day one, I, I think there's, you know, an issue there. But nevertheless, I'm good with it. How does the rest of the board feel if they add another 25 short-term rentals to our lovely town?
Not owner occupied.
No, just occupied.
Right. So in other words, there's no, there's no more owner occupied, there's no more non-owner occupied that we're gonna.
Correct, correct, correct.
I think that, I think that that wasn't included. I think it was non-owner occupied that they wanted to reopen.
Oh, because from what I gathered, the, the, the.
I don't know. I just read the article like you guys did.
Yeah.
Because the committee for the short-term rentals said that they had people who had rooms that they wanted to rent. So that sounded more like it was owner occupied.
It does.
Why don't we just take a position that we're opposed to any more permits being granted for non-owner occupied? But of course, the supervisor's inclination to, you know, up to go to a higher number than presently exists for short-term rentals, doesn't that conflict with all of the movement in the town about affordable housing and the impact on housing stock and so on? So.
And the supervisor's own initiative in that direction.
Right, but we're gonna, do we have a consensus on the board on that aspect?
Here comes John.
You, you have an affordable housing committee in town that's already working, right? Maybe they should be commenting on it.
That was what I was gonna say. There is a committee on this and it doesn't sound, from the newspaper article, which who knows if it's accurate. I mean.
Can, can you?
John's back, by the way.
Hi, John.
Who's talking?
We were just talking about the short-term rental thing and basically we came up with opposed to non-owner occupied short-term rentals, especially with the affordable housing crisis we have right now. How's that sound?
Are we allowing any input from the public?
I don't know.
Me tonight?
I don't know if John can hear me.
There is a member of the public who wanted to say something, but I don't know if we're permitting that. And now she's gone, so I don't know what happened.
I'm, I'm on the house.
Okay.
Peter?
There's two issues. One is do we, should we oppose any increase, any further permits for non-owner occupied? And then the second issue, which I think should be kept separate, is should there be any additional permits issued at this time, whether owner or non-owner occupied, given the concerns and the existence of the, you know, the, the affordable housing work that's being done? Or should that question be referred to the housing, you know, that committee? I'm inclined to say no new permit.
Well, yeah, I mean, the question is, it's, we should ask the committee exactly of these 25 people, what the conditions are. Because I got the impression it was people that owned a house, lived in the house and wanted to rent a room, which would be not, would not take away from housing.
But the thing is, there's already.
Connor, hang on. Just FYI, I did receive yesterday an, an owner occupied short-term rental because it's five bedrooms. So we're gonna see another case of owner occupied short-term rental. It's owner occupied, but remember I said they may come through the pike? We will have that in front of us in October.
We have somebody with their hand up over there.
Remember, sorry, I was just trying to let the planning board get their thoughts out. Go ahead, Urina.
So I, I'm here, I'm on the housing committee and, you know, I've one of the original members for the last three and a half years. And I, I wanted to say a couple of things. One, as you know, we're in a housing crisis. Two, I understand there's 15 spots that are open, if that is correct and accurate and true. I'm, I'm assuming that that's correct for owner occupied. But I, I would like to mention that things may be changing and the short-term rental task force are, have a document, they are getting ready or they have started to, the process of an updated recommendation to the current 2019 law, short-term rental law. So we had changed the town board members and Richard was ahead of that. And it's been handed off to Maria Elena Conte as the new liaison. I think maybe if you could speak to her before making final decisions and look at the recommendations that are coming. And then also, I just want to say Kai Farmer, Kai Lord Farmer, who is a new Ulster County Planning Board, came to our meeting, housing committee meeting last week. He's going to be, uh, going to the town board to do a presentation on the Ulster, the Ulster County Housing Initiative, Smart, the Smart Initiative, which talks about having mindful or very good, I'm just trying to like look at that document really quickly. One second. It's the Housing Smart Communities Initiative. And one of the things on there is to create short-term rental regulations. And one of the recommendations, when we asked him if what he thought about non-owner occupied, that he agreed and that the research showed, which we have new research that he has given us and we're going over it as well and going to sharing it with the short-term rental task force, that non-owner occupied short-term rentals are something that maybe we should think about eliminating, that only owner occupied should be allowed. And that that is also a good part of why we're in the crisis that we're in.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. I'm in favor of that.
I have a proposal, Peter.
Me too.
Go ahead.
I suggest that we reply to the supervisor that there are some moving parts going on. And we do not feel that a change should be made before the task force has come to some conclusions. That increasing the numbers at this time is premature.
I would. John has his hand up. John?
Well, just simply concur 100% with Judy.
I can send that email.
Thank you, everybody.
Anybody else has got an opinion about that or are we all?
Yes, I, I thank you very much, Urina, for, for bringing that up. And it's, I, I, I think Judy's suggestion that we put a hold on, on approving more housing, you know, short-term rentals until the housing committee has some proposals.
This is basically what I have. With moving parts going on, a change should not be made. Increasing numbers is premature. We'll keep it short and sweet.
And more, just maybe even as part of moving parts, more information is coming from the county.
Yeah, I wouldn't look at it as moving parts. I was trying to say it's short and sweet, but that, there are committees working on this. There are recommendations forthcoming from our own town's committees, task forces.
Judy, do you want to put this together and send it to me and I'll send it to Bill tomorrow?
Um.
Yes, come on Judy, you can do it, you can do it, you can do it.
She's my wordsmith.
She is.
Do it in the form of a poem. Or at least a haiku.
And Judy, you're, you're intimately involved with the, the revisions that I know that we recommended to, to be updating that in the short-term rental, that we're gonna be talking more about that and coming soon, the town board's gonna hear from the county. So to give it a chance, I think you're an awesome person to write it and I'll help you.
I just think, Judy, we keep it short and simple, but you can take the brain power away from me.
Just, just so unclear here, we have a town, we have a town task force working on it. We have recommendations from the county working on it. There are implications in the housing task force zoning revisions, all of which suggest this is premature.
Yeah.
Yes.
I will do that.
One more thing, guys. I need a volunteer.
Can I say one quick thing? We have a huge problem with the enforcement, so that also needs to be addressed. Before we're allowing more, we gotta get on the enforcement part, because we already know there's a ton doing it anyway.
Well, that's exactly what the article said, that the people said if they don't get a permit, they're gonna do it anyway. So.
Yeah, yeah, we're working on that. Thank you. I'll be quiet now. Thank you.
Thank you for your input, Urina. All right, we need one more thing. I need a volunteer for the site visit on O'Hale Mountain Road.
And I have something else too.
Okay. Volunteer, O'Hale Mountain Road, lot line revision. Three lots becoming two.
Okay, is any other input from anybody on this or we agreed to let Judy get a letter together and Melissa send it to the supervisor?
Yeah, that I think we're done with. The question is.
I need a volunteer for the site visit.
I'm sorry, Melissa, what was it?
I need a volunteer. I need a volunteer for the site visit for the.
Oh, for the site visit, yes, yes.
Over on O'Hale Mountain Road. Who's game?
Can we get a volunteer?
Three lots are becoming two.
I hear none. We need a volunteer.
I can't do it.
I can't do it.
I'll do it.
Thanks, Peter. I'll send you the information. All right, next meeting will be Zoom. It's just like two days after that thing, so I had to send out for a public hearing. So we have, I have scheduled a public hearing and then fan makers will be back and fingers crossed Matt's gonna show.
And?
Overstocked. And then Judy, it's Judy's turn now.
I would like to ask my colleagues on the board to give me some input on the zoning changes. I have heard nothing from anybody.
Okay, we will get some words out to you.
If you want me to sit down and walk, and walk you through the summary document, not the whole zoning code, and have your questions come out of that, I'm very willing to do that.
Oh, wait a minute, didn't we have our recent meeting where, with the planner who?
We did, and we still have not drafted any response to the town board or to the task force about our positions, opinions, concerns.
But there were concerns, but we did express concerns at that meeting. So maybe if you look at the minutes and.
That's what I thought. I thought Nan was taking notes. That's why I didn't prepare anything, because I, I saw Nan taking notes and said she was taking them back. So I assumed that it was collaboration, like Stuart's saying, Judy.
Is everybody satisfied that that's sufficient input?
Well, I mean, there was one that Stuart brought up in that meeting, there was a major objection saying that the cart was before the horse to, to change the zoning before the issue was resolved. So.
Sorry, which issue?
Well, there, I, I don't remember specifically what they said, but.
It was mainly the issue of density and affordability. I mean, for me, primarily affordability, though Judy had a lot of density. And what's the criteria and all that, right? And now it's coming back to me. We focused on, well, how do you define it? And, and what's the criteria and who's going to decide what, whether it meets the criteria? So.
Yeah.
Well, that was verbalized during the meeting. So are we expecting to actually put it in writing now to them when, when?
That was the general idea, yes.
I mean, the, the problem that I run into about it is that this is Woodstock and there's nothing affordable here. Nothing. It's affordable. My daughter can't, I mean, she's in college. She can't rent a place anywhere in this town. Nothing. There's nothing affordable. And I don't know how anybody could build anything affordable, because the cost of building today is such that I, 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 you know, I don't know how you can create a zoning amendment.
There are two major potential outputs to the proposed revision. One is better protection of the land, especially in the case of subdivisions. That is one thing, and I think it's an important one.
Well.
The other is the question of affordability. We have gotten a lot of feedback on density. We're certainly taking that into account. We've gotten a lot of feedback on the fact that affordability is not built in, but I don't know how it can be. But there are certain things we're considering about ways of doing that in the second draft.
I remember now, I remember what the issue was. The lady that brought it up said that if you allow two accessory buildings on every lot, we're gonna, that's.
Okay. And let, and let me say two things about that. We currently allow one and very few of them are built. So the idea that people are gonna build two and they're not even building one is, but we're gonna, it's very clear that we're not gonna have two.
Except for the speculators will do whatever they want unless there's strict criteria on, on how much they can charge or, you know, what the affordability criteria are built into the, the legal.
Yes, yes. And we said in the law, we said in the law, and we will make it clearer that the federal and state definitions of affordability, which have to do with 30% of income and they also have to do with a median income in the, in the county. Those are specified and they will be specified.
That's gotta be made plain, because otherwise we'll be making this question worse and we don't want to do that. John?
That 30% you're talking about, Judy, is the low end of the scale. That affordability scale, as far as the way the state treats it, is sliding. That's, that's, 30% is, is a number that's not realistic today.
Certainly not. Rent a house for that. Or an apartment for that. Is that what you mean?
Right. I mean, that went through with RUPCO. You know, RUPCO offered affordable housing.
Yeah, but we.
They got government funding and they got a tremendous amount of, you know, leeway in there. And that's.
RUPCO's been doing this for what, over 30 years now, 35 years? And they're very seasoned. They're very well thought of at the state level. They manage to acquire a lot of grants. We managed to scare them out of this town. They're not coming back. That's the simplest, I mean, they would have been the savior as far as affordability and housing in this community. And we managed as a township to make sure that they never come back.
Yeah, it's a, it's a tough haul. Remember the one in Wittenburg, where we had the gentleman that wanted to put up four apartments, two buildings with four apartments each? And that was in the realm of affordability. Well, he, he gave up.
I didn't think so.
He gave up on that. There were so many people against it.
Exactly.
Anyway.
That's not the way I remember that, Peter.
Well, yes, everybody was against those apartment buildings in the, in Wittenburg. Everybody was up in arms against it. And that was, they were affordable, you know, to the standards that we think of today. But anyway, I get your point, Judy. Let's, we'll have everybody write you their opinion of where they stand on the case right now.
I would appreciate that.
Okay. Anybody else have some input or we ready for adjournment?
I just want to thank John Lyons.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
By the way, did the applicant on the cell case put up an escrow?
Of course he did. You wouldn't have seen it if we didn't have it.
Okay, just asking. And thanks for your firm response.
You're welcome.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Everybody have a good holiday weekends. What, what, Melissa?
Thank you.
Okay. Good holiday weekend, everybody. Labor Day. Thank you all.
Thanks, Stuart. Thanks for doing that.
Bye, guys.
Thank you, Stuart.
Thank you.